See? Yeah, we have like four speakers already. Somerset and Maria Diaz. She wants to speak on the Somerset?
Yes.
Okay. Public hearing.
Do we have everyone ready? Ready, ready, please take your seats. Are we on live?
We are.
Alrighty. Today is Wednesday, January 18th, 2023. It is 7:30 PM. And today is a regular City Commission meeting of the City of West Miami. This meeting is called to order. For the invocation. Major.
Please rise.
Let's borrow heads. Lord, we thank you for all of our daily blessings which you bestow upon us. Lord, we ask that you give clarity and guidance to our city leaders and elected officials, so that they continue to make the right decisions when it comes to the wellness of the city and its residents. Please protect our military servicemen and women, as well as our law enforcement officers and firefighters, so that they may return home safely after their tour of duty. We ask all of this in your holy name. Amen.
Please stay present for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Item three, roll call. Mayor Eric Diaz Padron.
Here.
Vice Mayor Juan Blanes.
Present.
Commissioner Candida Blanca.
Yes.
Commissioner Ivan Chavez Jr.
Here.
Commissioner Luciana Suarez.
Yes.
Mayor, you have court.
Thank you, next item.
Item four, presentation of minutes for approval for December 7th, 2022, regular commission meeting.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion in favor, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Public comments?
Item five, public comments. I have four, uh, four speakers registered.
Are those speakers for the item?
They are for the application for the Somerset.
Okay, we'll wait for that item.
Yes.
Um, is there anybody who has public comments in general and anything that's not the school item today? Okay, we'll, we'll take out the public comments on the school item when the item comes. Thank you. Uh, for sake of time, let's, uh, let's skip over the reports until after the items that we have in front of us for our purpose of time. So let's just skip to item 10, unfinished business.
Yes, item 10, unfinished business. Item 10A, it's request for mitigation of liens for court violations at the property located at 1330 Southwest 59th Avenue, West Miami, Florida, 3144, and owner Lautaro Sarate.
And can you read the resolution as well?
It is my understanding Mr. Sarate wants to defer the items.
Right, we still have to read it for the deferral, so just get out of.
Would you like me to read it for the record?
Yeah, read the resolution, please.
A resolution of Mayor and City Commission of City of West Miami, authorizing the city manager to accept the mitigation offer in the amount of blank from Lautaro Sarate on court enforcement liens for court violations at the property located at 1330 Southwest 59th Avenue, West Miami, Florida, providing that payment in full is not paid by blank, then the amount owed shall revert to the original amount, providing for an effective date.
Good evening, members of the board.
Name and address of the record, please.
Lautaro Sarate, 1330 Southwest 59th Avenue. First and foremost, I just want to make clear that everything has been fixed as of last October. The inspector George, you know, already inspected everything. We haven't been able to get to this stage. Just now, you know, in talking to some other people, I would like to look, look for some legal advice before coming into the board. So, you know, that's what I'm, I'm looking for.
To your question, deferral?
Yeah.
Okay, for, for the purposes of getting legal advice?
Yeah.
Does anybody have an issue with that? Do we, do we need a motion, do we just say all in favor? Yes, all in favor?
Uh, deferring for, to, to continue this item until the meeting of February 15, Mr. Sarate, is that okay with you?
That's the next meeting?
Next meeting is February 1st.
What's the, you said, you didn't say the first, you said?
No, the 15th.
The 15th.
15th, the second meeting.
To give you some time, is that?
To give you some time.
Let's, let's put her for the 15th, that's fine.
Okay.
Okay. All in favor?
I would recommend, Mr. Mayor, before you take a vote on this, that maybe Mr. Sarate should be in contact with our office to let us know that he is, got, um, has legal counsel.
Yeah.
And if he's not ready, then we can advise the mayor and the commission so that we don't put it on the agenda until he's ready to come back to you all.
Yeah, I mean, this is obviously not super time sensitive, obviously you want to get this out of the way, but.
Yeah.
The one thing, I just wanted to make a statement that everything's being fixed, so, you know, there's no quote unquote issues as of right now the property, so.
Understood, exactly. So, um, with that said, all in favor of the deferral?
Yes.
Aye, okay.
Aye.
Until the, to the February 15th meeting?
Yes.
Unless otherwise stated. Okay.
Thank you.
Item 11, now.
11, under new business agenda items, item 11A, this is a public hearing, property address, 5859 Southwest 16th Street, West Miami, Florida, 32144. This is special use permit 2022-006, Somerset Academy Foundation, 5859 Southwest 16th Street, West Miami, Florida, 32144. Applicant requests a special use permit for the property at 5859 Southwest 16th Street, West Miami, Florida, 32144. The property 5859 Southwest 16th Street totals 48,780 square feet for the parcel. The total acreage for the R3 private school slash church, 1.11 acres. The parcel of land is within the private school religious institute designation. The applicant is requesting a special use permit to expand the capacity of student population from 289 students to 450 students. Applicant will provide alterations, the church building, and reconfiguration of existing parking lot areas to provide drop off and pick up stacking of the property. In addition, the dismissal times will be staggered to lessen impacts on the areas. Property will be enhanced with landscape buffers to the east and west side of the parking areas for the protection of the residential homes. Zoning ordinance 282, Section 2A. This is public hearing, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. On November 22nd, we held the Planning and Zoning Board Meeting for this item. And from that meeting, some changes and suggestions from the board came about from participation of folks that live around the property and folks that attend the school. If you wish, let them do their presentation, and then we come back to the details of the.
Absolutely. And, uh, Mr. Attorney, I, I know when Halloween night is here for some reason, I always screw up. At what point do we open the public hearing? After the presentation?
Well, uh, there will be, should be a presentation at first, and then you open a public hearing, so the public can know, can ascertain what is it that they're going to present.
Thank you.
Because at this point, all you have is a concept, and they should have their presentation of.
Thank you. Go ahead.
So let me just readjust this a little bit. Uh, good evening, my name is James Williams with Law Offices located at 71 Brickell Avenue, Miami, Florida, 33131. Tonight, I'm joined by my colleague, Mr. Hugo Arza, who is very happy he doesn't have to sit there with the clicker, I've, I've updated. We're joined by, really, the entire design development team, as well as school representatives. We have the architect for the, the project, we have the landscape architect, we have the traffic engineer, and like I said, we have representatives from the school all here in support of this project. And really, to answer any questions that you throw at me that I can't answer myself, they can, they can come in and chime in. So, starting into the project, the property location is located at 5859 Southwest 16th Street. So, the property I've outlined it in green, it's sandwiched between Southwest 15th Street to the north and Southwest 16th Street to the south. It's just off of Southwest 58th Avenue and Southwest 59th Avenue. As you can see, there is residential on either side of the property, and we are right next to Cooper Park. So, let's talk about what's existing there as of right now. So, the existing development is basically two different uses are using this property. We have two buildings, one to the north, which is, I've highlighted in pink, is the existing location of Somerset Academy, Gables, and the West Miami location, obviously. To the south of that, which is highlighted in blue, was the location of a church that's been operating there since 1980s. Now, I want to pay just close attention for a second to the top two images, because that's going to be a focal point in just a minute. So those top two images are the current breezeway that separates, that connects the two buildings. So the building to the north in the pink, and the building to the south in the blue. The image below, on the left, is the current recreational space. To the right is the entrance from Southwest 16th Street going north, along the church to the actual school. And then, the south, the, the lowest image is the actual frontage from Southwest 16th Street looking north at the church. So, again, I, I want to pay close attention for a second, as you can see, there's a makeshift driveway that's, that's currently there with the, the cars, and you have some landscaping on either side. So, I'll step back, and as you know, this is Somerset Academy, they've been on operation in South Florida since 1997. They have an excellent school record, they have a great curriculum, they are a well-known charter school. Specifically to the property's history, in 1987, 2008, special use permits were submitted to the city and approved, and even prior, were approved for a daycare school. So, this was when we started seeing the daycare school split with the church property. In 2013 is when Somerset leased the property, the northern portion of the, of the property, from the church so that they could operate their school. And that's when, that's the same year that they got the approvals to operate. In 2022, there was a option to actually purchase the entire property from, from the church, and so they went ahead, they purchased the, the entire property, and that's why we're here today. We want to now use the entire property for the school. So, the request, so the request is a special use permit to increase the student amount by 164 students from 286 to 450. Now, the, the current grade levels are pre-K through eight, and they will remain pre-K through eight, we just want to add to the student population. The, with the approval of the special use permit, there are really three things that you would be approving. You'd be permitting the adaptive reuse of the existing church, you would be allowing us to reconfigure the parking lot, to really make it a cohesive design for the entire school, not just two separate uses, which is how it is today. And you'd also be allowing us to really enhance the landscaping, which is something that's really rare. When projects come in, typically they're reducing landscaping, they want to add more, but we're actually not changing the building footprint that currently exists today. So, this is what I call an adaptive reuse project. In my opinion, this is the prime example. You have current, you can have these current structures, and we're going to reuse them to meet the entire cohesiveness of one project. So, what I've done is I've highlighted in pink the, remember that breezeway that I showed you in the images? That temporary kind of canopy, temporary awning style is now going to be, it's going to disappear. We're going to put concrete structures, but we're also going to keep it open air. So I'll show you what that'll look like in just a second. In the blue is the actual, is the existing church. As you can see, we're going to retrofit it, so we're going to have state-of-the-art classrooms operating inside. To the south, one of the benefits, as, as part of this purchase of the property, is, as I showed you earlier with the car in the driveway, which is on the left side, we're going to remove that, and we're actually going to enhance landscaping. So, let me show you, if you see these parking spaces here, that's the existing. This is now what we've done, we've increased it, and we're providing trees and landscaping. So we've actually been able to remove parking spaces and provide additional landscaping. Here are the west, the east and west elevations. So, the top is the east, and I'm, what I want to really point out is that breezeway. This is the breezeway we're talking about. It's now not going to be just an awning. We're actually providing walls on the side, it's going to stay open, but it's going to protect students and staff from the elements, which is essentially what you want to do, you want to make sure that everyone is protected from the elements. What the, the second point of that is now you're going to have one flush cohesive design, so it's not going to be just a church with a school, two different, kind of contrasting uses, you're going to have one cohesive campus now. So, uh, these are the, the south and the north elevations. Really, the reason I wanted to show this is I wanted you to see that we're not adjusting the height, we're staying within the perimeters, the maximum height in this area is 35 feet. We're staying with the 29 point, the 29 feet, three inches on the, on the south elevation, and the 26 feet on the north elevation. So, I'm not going to run you through the entire site plan, but I want to point out some key things I think are really important. When you're looking at the setbacks, we exceed all of the setback requirements. We have additional setback. When you look at the landscape open space, again, we exceed the open space requirement by over 4,600 square feet. When you're looking at the height, we come in far under the maximum height requirement. When you look at the parking, we come in, we either meet the code or we exceed it to every level. And as the parking requirement shows, we need to have 35 parking spaces, we are now providing 41. We've actually increased parking and increased landscaping at the same time. And I will note again, that unlike a lot of applications that come through, that it's difficult to meet the code requirements sometimes, this application has no variances attached to it. We are meeting or exceeding the code in every regard. So, I'll talk about, I'll, I'll get through this, because I know there's a lot of information on this slide, and I'll work counterclockwise, but let me point out again, that in this side, we have the existing site plan. This is the proposed site plan, and what I've done is I've really highlighted with the PowerPoint where we're providing additional design considerations. So, we'll start from the top right, which is the connecting walkways. So, we are now providing a connecting walkway in the east, and we're also providing a connecting walkway on the west that travels all the way down the property to this sidewalk. So, you could access either end of the school using this parking lot, using this sidewalk from 15th to 16th Street sidewalks. It's an internal walkway. In addition, this internal walkway has protection, because we have bollards that are protecting you the entire way. So you have connectivity. And that's important, because, and I'll get to the Planning and Zoning Board Meeting comments in just a minute, but I want to highlight that in that meeting, a lot of people spoke, and a lot of them actually take their kids walking to this school. So a lot of the parents that currently go there, they actually walk their children to school, which is a fascinating thing. If you look at the existing site plan here, there is no walkway. So this really gives us a second bite at the apple, really to improve, now that the school's been there, it's been operating, how can we improve it for our students, and really for the residents? The second point I want to make is the gumbo limbo. It's an amazing shade tree, we're actually putting a total of five around the property, we have one right here at this corner. If you now look at the light blue here, these are pigeon plum trees. Now, we have a total of 12 throughout, majority of them are right here, but as you can see, there is no landscaping here, and there is only a six-foot buffer for the hedge here. So what we've done is we're keeping the entire six-foot hedge, and we're actually adding six-foot hedge to make sure the entire property has six feet of buffer. But, we've also included additional parking, but we've had, we now have, when you look at this image, we have about three rows broken up with the parking spaces, but of different hedges. And so they're at different heights, so you have six foot of the buffer, then you have additional hedging, so it's a nice layering. But on top of that, you'll see the trees. So those are 12-foot pigeon plum trees, and I've, I've put an image on it right under there, so you can see there's a man standing next to it, and how dense that actual tree is. So what you, we're essentially doing is, we have a six-foot buffer, right? We have these smaller buffers that are going to grow up to probably around four feet, they can keep, they can continue growing. But then we have a vertical buffer, so it's the trees at 12 feet height from the time of planting, you're going to have that nice solid wall going across. We also have the orange geigers, which are at the entrances of the property here. We've also, as, as I mentioned earlier, we got rid of these parking spots, and what we've done is we've increased the landscaping, so you have all this greenery now on both sides. And then, we also pick up this recreational area that we can now use for the school, for the students, so we have now one and two recreational areas. So, I always talk about traffic, because it somehow always comes up at these meetings, and for good reason, everyone knows. However, this is a particularly interesting project. So, what I've done is I've marked out these green circles, there's five. This is where staff is located during the pickup and drop, drop off periods. This school has a great reputation with the neighborhood, in fact, the property owner, they're the right across 16, right across 15th Street. He's lived there before the school came in, spoke at the meeting, and says he's never had a traffic issue with Somerset because of how well-run their parking is, and, and their vehicle circulation. What we've also done is, and I'll, and I'll go back to it in a minute, but we've, we've specifically outlined this area as staff parking. And that's because the neighbor next door voiced some concerns at the Planning and Zoning Board Meeting. We actually met with her, she's here today, I don't know if she'd like to speak, but we've addressed her concerns, and we've also been able to keep the landscaping there for her. I do want to note that in the traffic operations plan, we do have three shifts, so there will be staggered 30-minute intervals per each arrival and dismissal time. The, I'd like to give some, some key highlights from the traffic study. The traffic study says that in the morning, 15 cars at the, at the highest peak period could enter the property all at one shot, and in the afternoon during the dismissals, you could have up to maximum 17 cars entering the property all at one time. So what does that mean for us? We have to provide, we have to make sure we can house all those vehicles on our property so that none spill over into the street, because the last thing you want is to, is to back up either Southwest 15th or Southwest 16th. So what we've done is through our calculations and the way we've outlined the property now, is we're actually able to, the study says, confirms that we have 29 stacking capacity vehicles, so we can stack 29 vehicles on the property all at one shot. But, it doesn't, it also says that there is an additional surplus of, of, we have a surplus of 13 parking spaces for the vehicle stacking that we've designated as visitor and stacking. So we have visitor and supplemental, and we have open parking for, for stacking, so it's P2 and P3. Here are the three on this side, but here are the additional parking spaces we can make use of. So on the property, we can actually house at one time during the arrival and dismissal periods, up to 37 vehicles. So we can house more than double what we're required to by, by the county codes. So, improvement highlights like I, I've discussed, so I'll move this, I'll move through here really quickly. We have the additional, the breezeway, which will provide you the students and staff protection from the elements. We are, it'll also provide one cohesive look to the entire campus. We are enhancing the vegetation, which increases privacy to the neighbors, it's an aesthetically pleasing look for the residential area. It helps deter any possible noise that could be generated from, from going through, it, it helps as an additional buffer. We have internal walkways to both sidewalks. We, if you look at this, we're not providing any outdoor speakers, but if you look at this image, you can't really see it, but we have AC units on the outside of the building going all the way across. We're actually, as you know, those produce noise and vibrations, we're actually taking all those off, and we're providing a full internal AC system. So you're not going to have, it's going to be one, aesthetically more pleasing, but two, you're not going to have that noise generated from those AC units anymore. We have enhanced, as you, as you saw, we are, we have an additional recreational space for students, we have an enhanced traffic operations plan like you just saw, and we're going to be able to provide state-of-the-art classrooms with the development. So, I'll gloss over this very quickly, but there is a need. And this study shows from 2010 to 2020, there was an additional, over 1,200 people that moved into the city of West Miami. But that doesn't take into account the last three years of people that are moving to South Florida. That we've had a massive influx, you see reports about it all the time in the newspaper, with, with more people comes essentially more families, which comes with more students. So, this, uh, in addition to that, we do have a 1,000-student waiting list currently for this one specific school. So right now, there's a stu, there's a waiting list of 1,000 students. I'm not going to sit here and tell you they're all from City of West Miami, but they're primarily from the City of West Miami and the City of Coral Gables. So, what does your staff think about this? So, staff has found that this project, and I'll, I'll gloss over it, but it is compatible, that the new vehicle circulation system does work, and it will work. The adequate, there is adequate buffers between the residential and the surrounding properties. The overall design will provide for a cohesive campus design and scale, and it's architecturally compatible with the area. The proposed parking configurations and the proposed times of arrival and dismissal will work for the area, they won't impact, they won't be a detrimental impact to the surrounding area. And so for those reasons, your staff is recommending, a recommendation of approval to increase, the student increase to 164 with the, with the plans proposed. Now, as was mentioned, there was a Planning and Zoning Board Meeting on November 22nd, 2022. And at that meeting, your Planning and Zoning Board unanimously recommended approval of this project. They had three conditions, and I want to walk you through each condition so I can show you how we've addressed them. So, the first condition was to provide a completed walkway on the west side of the property from 15th to 16th. Before that, we had just stopped it to the main, main structures of the school, we didn't have it running all the way through. And as I pointed out earlier, we now have that walkway on the west side going all the way through. The second condition, at the time of planting, ensure a six-foot hedge along the east and west boundaries of the property to buffer the residential homes. And so what we've done is, originally, we had clusias shown all the way along up and down, but the time of planting, they were about two feet, which is a good point that they made. It's going to take a couple of years for them to grow to six feet. So, originally, we thought it would be difficult to have those maintained during the construction. Our landscape architects looked at it, we're going to keep the existing six-foot buffer here on each side, we're adding six-foot buffers along the frontage as well. And we're going to increase the landscaping with additional shrubs, like I told you, the, the buffering effect leveling down and up along the property where we have it shown here. The third comment, the third condition, the last condition, was to plant silver button woods closer together or plant larger ones at the time of planting. I was specifically really looking at the, this property here, this, this landscaping area. They made the point that silver buff, the silver button woods tend to sometimes not be as dense. So what we've done is we had originally shown silver button woods, these are two that we replaced, silver button woods, and we had the Simpson stoppers. The Simpson stoppers came in at 10 feet at the time of planting, and the silver button woods were showing at 12 feet at the time of planting. We've replaced those, and now as you see, we've provided a more dense option, which is the pigeon plum and the orange geiger. Both of these at the time of planting will be 12 feet, and they could grow up to 25 to 30 feet. So I think at the time of planting, you now, like I said, you have a six-foot buffer of the hedge, you have buffers of additional landscaping in that area, starting at around two feet at the time of planting, but they'll grow. And you now have all 12-foot trees at the time of planting that are very dense, so you're creating a really nice green wall effect. So we've met all three conditions. And like I mentioned earlier, there, we revised the plans to address the neigh, one of the neighbor's comments that spoke on the technical aspect. And she lives right here. Now, I don't know if she's going to speak, but she made a comment that she has a condition where she's hypersensitive to noise. So she was concerned, when we had the stacking shown here, we had parking spaces going up and down, north, south to north, and we had about five spaces there, so people could pull in, wait if they wanted to. Her concern was having those cars coming in and out is going to generate noise, and that she's sensitive to it. She really didn't mind if we got rid of the landscaping, that wasn't the concern. What we ended up doing is basically gave her the best of both worlds. We have now in the TOP designated this as only staff parking, which is what she wanted. We've rearranged the site plan for it, and what we've also been able to do is provide her with a dense buffering area here with the pigeon plums, with the existing six-foot buffer, and with the additional smaller hedging that, that's going to go along. So we've been able to meet her concerns. With that, that's the conclusion of the PowerPoint. I know it was a bit long, but you always ask a lot of great questions, so I really wanted to try to jump in front and see if I could nail as many as I could. If, if you have any questions, myself and the rest of the team are here to answer them. I would like to just reserve some time for rebuttal if necessary, but thank you for your time.
Thank you.
It will be proper now, Mr. Mayor, to open up for a public hearing, so you can, I'm sorry, it will be proper for you to hear from staff at this point, and then go open to the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, one thing that Mr.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, one thing that Mr. James Williams then addressed was that our consultant now, Kyle Tran, which is our traffic engineer that we hired as a fact-checker of all the stuff that's in the traffic report, has been approved by them, has been reviewed by them, and there is a letter of approval for the record from Kyle Tran in your package.
Thank you. Okay. Is there anything else?
Everything else has been addressed. Yes?
James mentioned a couple of times that there were some parking spaces that were done away with in order to bring in more landscaping. Was that a condition of the permit or the code? Or, that was something that you all did voluntarily?
That was something that was discussed initially during our conversations with the architect at the beginning, and over, there was excess parking on the church for the church purpose. For the school purpose, they already meet the requirements of the code.
I personally would like to see more parking spaces. I think it would be a much better fit for the project. But, if that's what they want, but do consider maybe adding those parking spaces and maybe putting less landscaping in the front, which, you know, I see that the main concern is having more landscaping on the sides to create the buffer.
Well, it was the concern of the buffering, but it was also the concern of those parking spaces that initially were in the front of the property. Those are hazardous to people that are arriving and leaving into the three-tier stacking that they have for the property.
Let me just ask, before we open a public hearing, the, under the current special use permit, is there a cap on students? Or is that not contemplated?
Yes, the current cap is 289.
Okay, thank you.
One more question. The hedges, our code now allows for eight-foot tall hedges. So, is there any condition there where it will allow them to have, instead of six, eight feet? And wouldn't that be better to create more of a buffer for the residents?
The only parts that our code allows eight feet is for residential areas.
So, not commercial?
No.
Okay, all right. Thanks.
If I may, with the growth, we can just let it grow and just top it off. We just want to make sure at the time of planting, we provide the six feet to address any concerns from the Planning and Zoning Board and any neighbors.
All right. Let's open the public hearing. Public hearing is now open. Do you have speaker cards, Madam Clerk? So, whoever didn't submit a speaker card is fine, you can come up. We'll just take the speaker cards first, and then after that, following that, we'll just say name and address of the record. Go ahead, call.
Liliana Pulido.
Hi.
Name and address of the record.
Liliana Pulido, 1085 South West 58th Avenue.
Thank you.
So, as a working mom, I think one of the things that are great is the dismissal with the pickup time. I mean, sometimes it's crazy with the traffic, so I think this is amazing. Also, the fact of, you know, all the, adding more space for students. I do have another daughter that would like her to start there, but obviously, right now, as they said, they have thousands places or, you know, for people waiting for, to get in. So, that's a great thing to have more people or more students for, to be able to start at Somerset. Another thing that I think would be great is for them to have more outdoor areas for the kids. I know even for aftercare, I think it's a huge, you know, plus for them to be able to, you know, take the kids out. Right now, they don't have that much space. And also, it provides, you know, less disruption for the neighbors around the city or, you know, the school. So, I think those are my main things that I think are great for the expansion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Christina Harper.
Name and address of the record, please.
My name is Christina Harper. I'm at 6530 Southwest 17th Street. At risk of dating myself, I've been a West Miami resident for 45 years. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, this evening for allowing us to speak. I am a parent of two boys that go to Somerset. They're both student council. We're super pleased with the school, huge supporters of the school. We feel that as a family and as a community, the, not only are the proposed changes going to beautify the property, but really enhance the space in general to continue to offer great learning spaces and great recreational spaces, and also the ability to offer more families like mine and the parents that are here, the opportunity to have a choice to send their kids to an amazing school like Somerset. So, we thank you for your consideration for the expansion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sandra Machin.
Name and address of the record.
Good evening. Sandra Machin, 1620 Southwest 65th Avenue. Thank you again for allowing us to have this opportunity to speak here. I've been a resident since 2003. My daughter's been a student since 2015. As a, when they say that it takes a village to raise a child, well, they're the village to many children, to 289-plus. So, it is a great school, a great campus. On the side, as a West Miami resident, this campus would be excellent compared to whatever else would be built there, and it would beautify our area. So, I would like just to make that point, that this would just be positive, a positive opportunity for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Maria Diaz.
Thank you for everything you do. I am Maria Diaz. I live at 6246 Southwest 15th Street, and I won't say how long I've been living in the city. I refuse to say that. Excellent presentation for business. However, I am a resident who drive, I live on 15th Street, and I drive right there daily. I have pictures on my phone from today at 3:09. There are six cars coming on 16th Street this way and six cars here, two West Miami police officers and a school employee standing there, and cars are crossing or going around the people that are waiting to get in. That is with 189 or whatever people left, less students. So, my biggest concern is we have the Biltmore School, Publix, Savannah Heights, all on 57th Avenue, one back to the other. I think the problem here is the traffic. Another thing that I would like to see, and I'd have no children that would attend this school, is if they give priority to West Miami citizens or residents, not because of the SIP code, because 33144 is mostly Coral Gables, and 33155, which is also West Miami, is most of it outside. So, a lot of times, they pick kids with SIP codes and that one not. If we're going to sacrifice for our business, then they need to give us some kind of priority for our residents to be able to have their kids attend that school. But, my biggest issue is that of the traffic and also of the green space. I know that they use, I don't know with permission or not, and it is public area, but they'd use Cooper Park, which is fine. It is a public park for all of us to use. But, I think if they use more of it, then maybe they need to have more green space, which there's no way they can attend with the property they have as is. And one of the things that concerned me with the illustration he showed is it must mean something to them, is they show a car parked in the front door, that is not a parking space. You call it a parking space, but it's not a parking space because that is the front entrance and it doesn't have a drive-through. And I believe in order to have a car go up a sidewalk, you have to have it paved in the city of West Miami. So, I don't know why they make a big issue out of that. I don't know if it has something to do with they're giving that up, but that is not a parking space as it is. So, those are my main concerns, but I think the traffic on 16th Street is terrible, even breaking it up at times. And I do have pictures that I would love to share with all of you, today at 3:09, showing the current situation as it is today. So, with added, I don't know, I don't know how you're going to deal with it. I know the police are on overtime and they get paid, but still, it's traffic and it's an accident waiting to happen. I walk, and Publix is an issue, coming out that ramp, the school's an issue, all of that area is already an issue. So, with that added traffic, I don't know, I don't think it's the best thing for us. I do think Somerset is a good business, it is a good school, but maybe they can see if they can grow it in Coral Gables, and this is only their west campus. That's all I wanted to bring up. I'm very concerned about the traffic and the well-being of those that will be affected because we live on 15th Street, which will get all those people, or even myself, when I drive to Publix or drive out, that I have to deal with that. So, I just wanted to bring that up to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No more speakers, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we don't have any more speaker cards. Is there anybody who did not fill out a speaker card that would like to speak? I see a hand.
Will you please sign a card after you finish, okay?
Yeah, I would just need to borrow a pen. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Grace Padron. I live at 5841 Southwest 14th Street. I've been a resident of West Miami for over 35 years. I actually was part of the original daycare when it opened in 1987. So, for me, I've been able to raise my family here. I have two young children who attend Somerset Academy Gables, and it has been beyond a dream to be able to take them to school, actually walk to school, as I live on 14th Street, and see them go to the place where I attended as a child. It is a community. They've helped me tremendously in raising my children, and I know that when they're there, they are safe, they're learning, they're growing. This expansion would alleviate a lot of my concerns as far as the space, you know, they're young, growing children, and having extra space for them to expand more children into the school that can cause interactions and learn and have more places for activities for them. As far as the traffic concern, you know, there are other businesses that could be attributing to that. I understand with increasing children, there may be more of that concern, but for the most part, we have never experienced such a thing, which aim to walk as much as possible, but often do take the car and never really experienced much of a concern with that. I really encourage you to strongly consider this expansion, not just for our family, but for the other families of City of West Miami. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that did not fill out a card that would like to speak? Seeing none, okay. Close it before the rebuttal?
Well, you can rebut.
Yeah, I think you better reserve some time. I'm sure you would want to go over some of the things on traffic, on green space, and on the West Miami preference.
Yes, thank you so much for giving me some time to address those concerns. So, in terms of the pictures and the traffic issues that she's experiencing as of even today, we would welcome for her to show us those and work on those, but part of the improvements of the site are going to be improving both sides. We haven't been able to use both sides, and we haven't been able to design it the way it needs to be designed according to the TOP that you're showing today.
I guess I'll be there just to make a clarification. Today, when you're doing the traffic pattern, if you can even populate a screen there that has, so we can understand.
Here we go.
So, today, what area is being used?
So, from my understanding, it's the left, it's the west side, so this side is being used for traffic, right, for the vehicular movement. Once we fix this, so there's a couple of issues, let me point this out, if you don't mind, it would just be about it. So, right now, we have the parking, right? We have parking here. This, what ends up happening is when someone's backing up, when they come in, this actually prevents them from continuing on. So, if someone's backing up, that's a problem. It's going to stop the flow of traffic and push it into Southwest 16th Street. So, what we're doing here is we're having this throat now. And so, what that does is it allows people to actually fill in and get along this roadway so that they can get to the stacking, right? So, that's a huge benefit. Not only that, we now have this same design here along this side, so we have two lanes now moving forward, and it's going to help with the traffic flow. The problem is, is essentially, we had two different uses. We had the church, which needed, which had their own configuration from, that was existing. And then, we had the daycare schools that had the previous use, and then we came into Somerset in 2013. This is allowing us to take a second bite at the apple and really design something for a cohesive campus. So, that, right off the bat, is going to address the parking.
So, just so I understand the flow?
Yep.
Because I was under the impression that it was going to be a U, but this is not a U, but you're entering through two different points?
Yes, two different points.
So, if you are a parent picking up your child?
I'm going to show you the...
You're going to either be on the west side or the east side?
Yes.
And then, you're going to designate it because you're going to know where to pick up your child every day?
Exactly, and so the...
And you're coming through 16th Street.
Yeah, so, the entrances are 16th, so we have two arrows coming through, and they'll both work their way. What happens here is we have communication between the staffers, so they already have an idea as they're walking down whose kids need to be ready at the door. So, it's going to really help keep an efficient flow. And like I said on the traffic study, with this design, we can house on the property right now up to, with the improvements, up to 37 vehicles. The reason it's 29 vehicles officially in the traffic study, it's a little technical, but Miami Dade County is very technical with how much they're going to say that you can allot to it. So, we really only allotted the certain amount of stacking. But, as I've shown in the TOP, these are designated for the actual staff, not for the staff, for the visitors or for stacking.
So, you have the spots that are designated for stacking, so basically, someone's waiting, they can pull in there?
Exactly.
And then, how many currently can you stack today, under today's...
So, here you have 12 on each side.
12 today, and it's going to be up to 29 and really 37?
Exactly.
Okay.
And again, they really are only going to be able to park here if this person is giving them the okay. They just can't roll in and first come, first served. This is, we want a fluid movement, so it has to be cleared.
Right. Can you address the comment on the parking spaces? What parking spaces is, was the resident speaking about?
Oh, okay. So, let me go, so that's why I had pointed, and I apologize if I wasn't clear in the beginning, but I had called out this image because there's a car essentially...
Right, that's not a parking space.
It's not a parking space. And as part of the plan, as you can see from the changes here, this is what we're talking about in that image. We're actually getting rid of this, and we're now creating a second recreational area.
Got it. Would you like to address that point on the recreational spaces?
So, recreational space, charter schools, there's not a requirement for recreational space. However, in this case, with the purchase of the property, it was specifically so we could obtain two spaces here.
Well, that alleviates some of the usage of Cooper Park. I mean, to be clear, I don't think anyone has a problem with kids using Cooper Park, but will it, I think the point was well-stated that you don't want it to become basically a second backyard of those three schools.
No, but I believe there's park permits that must be pulled and approved by the city in order to actually use the park, so it's up to the city if, when and if we can actually use that park. I actually believe it was raised at the Planning and Zoning Board meeting that they actually liked that maybe we could help out with certain parking for the park.
Yeah, it's not necessarily for the park, even though that would not be a terrible thing either. I know that we've been very grateful on, with the support of all the schools, Biltmore Schools, Savannah, and Somerset. During our special events, we moved to Cooper Park, Fourth of July, Christmas, et cetera. So, I don't know if that's, I mean, look, I expect that Somerset, who is usually a part of those events, will do it out of the goodness of their heart.
Yeah, they've already discussed that.
But, if there's anything that can be more formal on that front, obviously, we welcome that. Because it does extremely alleviate, what it does is alleviates parking around neighborhoods during those events, which can become more popular in the area. So, I don't know if that's something that you guys have entertained.
Yeah, we've already discussed that from the Planning and Zoning Board meeting, and it wouldn't be a problem. Obviously, we just need, we just need notice so we can coordinate. He's just reiterating that. We could even add that as a condition if you'd like for special events. I guess we could work out the notice language on that, just so we have some time to...
Yeah, just as an up or down.
Yeah, just in case we have an event or something going on, we can coordinate it.
In terms of, I'm just writing the list of concerns that were brought up. One of them is very interesting. I'm sure you guys have probably thought about it. I don't know, I haven't heard you guys address it yet, but the idea of West Miami preference, as you've heard, there's a lot of West Miami residents speaking, and I'm sure that was not by accident. But, you know, the school is very good academically, so, and the waitlist is real. So, obviously, any preference that we can get for our city would be really helpful. I don't know what your thoughts are on that.
So, it was already discussed. I'm just sometimes the messenger. We, they will... They will give preference to West Miami first, and we can even work, if you'd like, with the city to draft some kind of. So they've done it since the 2014 approvals, what I've been told. But specifically with the additional increase, we could work some language out. I don't know if you'd want to condition it or anything like that, where we, you can monitor and confirm that we're actually doing so. But that's the intent, and that's been the plan from what I was just told.
Yeah, I mean, I think just for safety's sake on our end, I think adding the conditions on the parking language and on the student preference language are important, because they're so important to the community, and that area in particular is very important for our special events, to mitigate traffic issues during those events. And again, we're trying to, if, like the resident mentioned, you know, it's a give and take sometimes, and that take of having the residence, which might, well, will benefit the traffic issue because obviously residents live closer and could actually walk, as many do, to the school. I think that would be a nice condition if you can work that out.
It's people helping people, so neighbors helping neighbors, that's what we're about.
Is there any questions, concerns, comments? Go ahead.
So you already addressed some of the concerns, or not concerns, but questions that I had. I just wanted to point out that with planning and zoning, giving you guys recommendations, you guys have ran with those and gone above and beyond as well. When a project like this comes to the city, it's ultimately going to beautify the city and bring, you know, additional amenities, I guess I would say, to the city and to the residents. Like, some of the residents mentioned they have a child in the school already, would love to get the other one in there. So it gives them more options to have their kids go to school together. But we also don't want to forget the residents that would be potentially most affected, those that live around the area. So I'd like to hear that you spoke with those residents. They came forward and you addressed their concerns. And again, you went above and beyond with those concerns. So as the mayor mentioned, there are some questions about allowing West Miami residents to have preference and, you know, kind of a partnership, kind of a partnership between you guys and the city. And that goes hand in hand with what you've been doing the whole project. You're trying to work it out to where everybody wins, and I think that it's going to be a beautiful project, and it's definitely going to bring, you know, a positive impact to the community as long as we continue to work together and address all of the different concerns.
If I could actually spell one more concern that you've obviously addressed, but I want to make sure that it doesn't become a problem in the future. There was the resident that lives next to the property that had the noise complaints. I believe we're probably talking with the same resident, but maybe during my campaign, I spoke to a resident who had the same issue. When I found out that there was, that there was special use permit coming, I thought that would be the time to address this issue. Now, you talked about the buffering, and I think it will work. Now, should that not be sufficient, right? Will Somerset commit to putting some more sound barriers, whether it not be artificial, but, sorry, not be natural, but even artificial, to alleviate that problem?
Since it's a tight space, so the resident we're speaking about, since I don't want to put anyone on the spot. The concern wasn't even the landscaping. She was fine if we had to actually get rid of the landscaping entirely, leave it like it is right now, just to provide the staff parking. Because her concern was just the coming in and out. It was really nothing else. She did have a concern of any recreational activities happening in the parking lot near her house. But we've told her that we will not have them going now that we have the additional space. If they need to, they have the additional space now, so that's not going to be an issue. But we provided the additional trees, the multi-layered buffering of the shrubs to meet that. If we had to provide an additional sound buffering, we would have to, again, work with the planning and zoning director to see what we could do. But with the limitations we already have, and what we've tried to accommodate with the additional landscaping, it would be very difficult. This is, again, we proffered that additionally so that we could further enhance her enjoyment.
Perfect. Go ahead, Vice Mayor. Vice Mayor and the Commissioner, go ahead.
Yeah, on the account of having preference for West Miami residents, I was thinking, if parents have a child enrolled in Somerset, and they have another child that has not started school yet, wouldn't it be great if you can have a legacy program where if you have one child, then the other one will be guaranteed to be enrolled in the school?
So before you answer that question, maybe you can just roll both of mine and his together. You talk about West Miami preferences being part of the 2014 application, but if you can further elaborate on what that preference is, and then address the question about the legacy.
Okay, so my colleague, really my mentor, right?
His colleague has done 50 charter schools in his life, so.
Exactly. And I welcome it, definitely, especially right now. So in answering that question, there's a state statute that allows a certain amount of window to give the preference to the city of West Miami. But in terms of having a legacy program where we give the preferential treatment, what we do is preferential treatment to those students. I don't know if they're going to guarantee it, just because you want to make sure that, I'm assuming that student is showing up consistently, that you don't want to just bring it in. But it's, the preference is to have more people from the same household going to the school because that actually reduces the amount of cars coming into the site.
Absolutely. That's a win-win situation. It would be great for the residents of the city of West Miami if they have a child already in the school, and, you know, they have a baby at home.
Yeah, yeah.
They won't have to worry about, you know, where their child is going to go to school. They have a school that they can walk to. That eliminates a car.
Yeah.
So I think it'd be a wonderful thing if you can have a legacy program for the residents of the city of West Miami.
Yeah, there is the legacy program for that.
So, and, feel free to jump in, it was a very technical question, not necessarily with the application, but maybe with the statutes. Can you elaborate again on the, what is the preference? Because is a preference.
For West Miami residents.
Yeah, but what does that mean? Is it, is it just that, you know, between one or two students, that student will get in? I mean, is there, I know this, does Somerset have a test to get in? What is the, what does that preference mean? I know it's a technical question on charter schools. It's not necessarily a land use question, so I'll give you a pass, but.
Yeah, now, now, I could always send an email to the planning and zoning director, and he can forward that. That's going to be.
If anyone has the answer to that.
Yeah, so Hugo Arza, 701 Brick of Albany, so state law allows us to open up preferential choice to any class we've created. In this case, since this approval by, you know, a commission several years ago, West Miami has had that preference. That's open for 15 days before it's open to anyone else. And one of the things, and that's state law governs, and then it goes into a lottery system, and it's all fairly regulated. You know, one of the things that I mentioned to James is we'd certainly welcome an opportunity to let the city know as we get ready to open up that window, so that it can not just be advertised and word of mouth with the current students that they have. But maybe the city has an opportunity to also let its residents know through the different means of communication that the city has at its disposal, that Somerset is increasing its enrollment, and there's an opportunity, and here's the date. And that initial date will be a West Miami date, so your residents hopefully will, you know, be able to jump on a little sooner.
Thank you, thank you.
So.
Go ahead, Vice Mayor, Commissioner.
So a legacy program will not be, by state law, will not be allowed to be installed, or?
I'm sorry?
A legacy program for the residents of the city of West Miami, is that something that by state law cannot be considered?
No, you have, you have it. It's in place already. You already have the, yes.
So if you have a child attending Somerset.
The preference is given to siblings, correct?
Right, so the sibling can. Okay, so.
So if you're a West Miami resident, and you've got a sibling, yes, we have, so you'd almost have, think of it as almost two bites at the apple, because you get a chance to apply, you know, and submit first, and you've already got. And they're going to start to fill in, and hopefully fill in as many siblings as they can. And all charter schools are governed by that regulation, so whether it's in West Miami. Not all of them choose necessarily. Some jurisdictions are not as savvy as yours was. Not every city commission or county commission requires a preferential treatment for an area. But since the initial approval for this school, the city of West Miami required that. And so we're, I mean, we don't need to add anything. It's already in place pursuant to your original approval.
I have something else. I'm not trying to be facetious here, but I just had a thought. There's that resident that complains about noise and being noise sensitive. Maybe Somerset can buy her a set of Bose noise-canceling headset? Let me tell you, it works.
Yeah.
I got one at home, and I put that stuff on, and let me tell you, I don't hear a damn thing.
I wear it to tune out my three kids.
In a very.
I know the feeling.
In a very elegant way, it can be presented to her, you know, as a gift, you know, as.
Take that as a recommendation.
Showing good faith. No, I'm serious about this. You know, maybe, you know what, maybe that will melt the lady, and she'll be delighted.
She's pretty, she's pretty happy right now, but.
Well, there you go. That's icing on the cake. Buy her the headset.
Commissioner, you had a comment, go ahead.
Just one more quick comment, just to a point of one of the residents that mentioned earlier, traffic on 15th Street. There aren't any vehicles that are allowed to idle on 15th Street, correct?
No.
And is there, the traffic study, does it state how the vehicles are supposed to leave the parking lot? Is there a certain direction to alleviate traffic?
There's not a specific direction that they have to take. But they, but when they come in and out, they will have to go right just to follow the actual road signalization. But there's not.
So on the east side and the west side, they're both going to be turning right? So they won't be slowing down to wait for a car to come?
And you're not going to be going west towards Savanah Heights?
Sounds good, thank you.
I don't usually do this, but because of the situation of there being one resident that is, I know, I'm, I, you know, I don't want to make tensions and start a debate, so please don't debate each other. Please go through the chair here. But, go ahead, I saw a hand up.
Just have a quick question again.
Absolutely.
What am I, do you have?
Maria Diaz, 6246 Southwest 15th Street. I know a lot of things are said and then forgotten. I'm just liking that the city residents will have preferential treatment, let's say. But when you said that they would go into a lottery.
I'm sorry.
Could the lottery be just for the West Miami? Like, let's say we'll give.
You address your question to them, and then they request it from the.
If it could be like, like stated, like 15%, 10% or 1%, will come, will be picked out of whatever number, come up with a percentage, where that percentage will be given priority to West Miami? Because just by throwing him in a lottery, you're not doing anything.
Yeah, you, no, you're correct, and that goes to an understanding that I thought I understood something differently, but I think it's important.
Because he said he would be thrown into the lottery, and then what?
The way I understood it, and we'll let him clarify, you know, on the statutory level and what we have agreed to already. The way I understood it today was that there was a 15-day early, basically an early enrollment period, right? And if you enroll in that period, you're not subject to a lottery. Okay.
Oh, I thought he said it would be thrown in through the lottery. It's thrown into the lottery.
I'm sorry, say that again?
So you're just going to let him file early, and then it goes into the lottery? So what special consideration would be given?
Thank you.
So that was my concern, just to give us a priority.
I appreciate that, because I want to make sure that that is.
Sorry if I misspoke. So the window is open for any West Miami residents to enroll their children. And if, you know, all of the seats get taken up by your students, there's no lottery, nothing. It's filled in. It's like an early enrollment.
I don't want this question again, because I know it's somewhat technical. 15 days, there's, you know, Somerset tells us, hey, the 15 days starts today, right? The whole city goes to enroll their kids in Somerset, right? They take all the spaces.
Then there's no lottery, there's nothing else, there's no one else that's going to fill the school other than the city of West Miami residents.
And that 15 days are not thrown into the lottery.
Correct, that is correct.
That was important clarification. Thank you.
Can I add a question?
Go ahead.
Just because I don't understand charter schools too much, so every year, is there a reapplication process, or once you're in?
No, no, once you're in, once you're a student.
You're a student until eighth grade.
Until eighth grade is over.
Yeah, of course, yeah, no, no, we don't, that would be.
Those 15 days are very important.
Yes, which is why we'll let, you know, we'll make, and our assistant principal is here. Our principal was at the planning and zoning meeting. She was traveling this evening, and so she couldn't be here. But the assistant principal's been the one that's been giving me the nuts and bolts. And again, we will make that date available plenty of time. We'll contain, you know, keep the lines of communication.
Yeah, I would hate to make that a condition, but to notify the city, but I'm sure, I'm sure.
We will.
We'll work with, make sure that that date is notified. All right, does anybody have any other questions? Go ahead.
Well, good evening. Welcome to West Miami. Nice crowd. The room is full, and we wish Happy New Year, 2023. Now, I'm going to do something that I remember, some of you are too young, but others remember. We have the county head mayor, Steve Clark. And when Steve Clark used to see the room full and hear only five persons requesting writing to speak. When he see the proportion of the people requesting to talk, he just use a very nice technique, common sense. And he ask the crowd, we don't know if all of you come from the school presentation or not. So I'm going to do something that I used to do. Can you raise your hand, the people who are here because interested in the school, in the school presentation? Okay, now, the second question. Can you raise your hand, the people who brought the school in favor of the project? Can you raise a hand, the people against the project?
Well, that wasn't fair. They're your client.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Does anybody have any questions or concerns?
Just for the record, Mr. Mayor, I think that you should note in the record that the question was asked, and the hands that were raised, and there was no opposition, so the record is clear.
If that's true, noted.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I think Major Delgado would like to put something into the record as we do have a daily participation at the school with our West Miami Police Department.
Major.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. As you are aware, we have an officer assigned to that school every day, as long as the school is open. As far as the traffic is concerned, they've always had a very good dismissal system. And what we are going to do, once that is incorporated, where everybody comes in 16th Street and out 15th Street, is going to be the officer's going to relocate to that part of the school to make sure that everybody's going in the same direction.
You're saying right?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Understood. Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. Time to close the public hearing, Mr. Attorney? Okay, hearing is now closed. If you could read the resolution.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, item 11B, a resolution of the city of West Miami Florida for site plan accepting, amending, rejecting the recommendation of planning and zoning board for special use permit for 5859 Southwest 16th Street, West Miami Florida 3144. Requirements or special use of certain buildings in the city of West Miami and in lieu of the rough, requiring certain improvements and other terms and conditions, providing for effective date.
Motion.
You have a motion, a motion to approve, I'm assuming?
To approve.
Motion to approve, okay. We have a second. And Claire, call the rule.
Yes, Commissioner Suarez, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Vice Mayor Planes?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Padron?
Yes.
5-0, item passes.
Thank you.
Thank you all so much for your time. We appreciate all your questions, and I hope to see you guys soon.
Thank you.
Getting better, James.
Thank you, I appreciate it. I'm learning from the best.
We'll wait for the room to clear out, and then we'll head with the reports and go back to the normal scheduled agenda.
Mr. Mayor? We have also the, the, Mr. Vice for the, for items C and D.
C and D.
Okay, we'll take those out of order, and then we'll go back to the normal.
Okay.
Okay. Happy New Year, guys.
I remember. I remember. I saw Steve Clark. They counted with three or four hundred people, five hundred, almost full.
We're gonna, we're gonna power through. We're not gonna do the usual break after a big item. If I can get people back to their posts. I know we have another special use.
Do you have a minute for a minute, Mayor?
One minute, one minute. And you're back.
A New York minute.
Don't forget your, your bag. Remember him. Don't forget his bag. You remember he was here.
He left it. I remember. Yes.
Let's, um,
Oh, sorry.
We, we, we won't, I mean, let's, let's see how far we can go without the, the attorney. Let's, let's do items C and D. If you can read them both.
Okay. Item eleven C, request for reconsideration of special use permit for plan development number two thousand and fifteen zero zero one, to allow modification of the approved fence approved by resolution two thousand and fifteen thirty-one with a proposed decorative precast fence. That's item C. Item D is a resolution of the city of West Miami, Florida, amending resolution two thousand and fifteen thirty-one for site plan approval of special use permit for plan development for Ben Dome LLC, nine eighty-five Southwest Sixty-seventh Avenue, West Miami, Florida, three two one five five. Requirements for development of certain land in the city of West Miami and in lieu of the rough, requiring certain improvements, dedications, and other terms and conditions, approving slash denying a request to change the wall behind the development as described by the attached activity, providing for an effective date.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, the property at nine eighty-five Southwest Sixty-seventh Avenue had a special use permit for plan development approved back in two thousand and fifteen. It was a thirty unit, thirty-one unit, thirty unit, I'm sorry, thirty or thirty-three? Thirty. Thirty unit apartment building facing Sixty-seventh Avenue. At that time, the commission that was in place at that time requested clarification on the perimeter wall that goes around the back of the building and on the sides. And at that time, it was described as an eight-foot precast wall. Since that time, COVID, shortage in supplies, things have changed. So Mr. Baez, which is one of the principals of the, of the building, has requested for us to allow him to change from that eight-foot wall precast to the six-foot wall, which is available, precast with a two-foot aluminum trellis to meet the eight-foot requirement that we set at that meeting. We didn't, Mr. Bieloz, myself, didn't think we had that authority. So we asked Mr. Baez to present to you to, to allow you to consider his request.
Okay. Name and address the record.
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. My name is Jesus Baez. I resided twenty eighty Southwest sixty, ninety, Ninety-Ninth Avenue. I was going to say Sixty-seventh Avenue. When we came for the original special use permit, my son, stand up, was six. He's thirteen now, six foot one. So it's been, it's been quite a challenge as a result of, as Mr. Penna explained, you know, the COVID situation, the expenses, the lack of manpower, and quite honestly, people are just, don't want to work, plain and simple. I did my analysis on, you know, on the zoning requirements and ordinances. Yes, the, the original use, special use permit included an eight-foot precast wall, which at that time was more readily available. Okay? The code has also changed. So the requirements of the wind load back then were much less than they are currently. So an eight-foot wall from when we originally started would have required a less of an impact, a less of a, a foundation of sorts to create a code compliant wall. Now, when you go to a six-foot wall, now I'm talking code, when you go to a six-foot wall, the code will allow you a certain reduction in wind speed. So your wind speed now goes to a hundred and fifty mile an hour. It's much more easily attainable than an eight-foot wall, which is quite a size wall. It's basically called a cantilever effect. An eight-foot wall, there's very few manufacturers that even entertain a code compliant wall. Permacast is one, Vertacree is another, Signature Precast is another, and none of them want to touch it. Why? Because of the complexity of the space, because of the lack of linear feet that they can charge. These folks basically put walls on expressways, on shopping strip malls. So they're talking about hundreds, if not thousands, of linear feet of wall that they put up. They're not going to come, regardless of the cost or the price that they could charge, they're not going to come to do a hundred, a hundred and fifty, two hundred foot of wall. It's just not, you know, it's not physically or financially feasible for them to do such. So with that in mind, I contacted a slew of different, you know, contractors, local contractors that could provide a precast eight-foot wall, none of which could actually meet the required code because of the height of the wall. So we entertained the idea of maintaining the eight-foot wall with the same requirements that the planning board had originally recommended. And we came up with a six-foot wall, therefore maintaining the hundred and fifty mile an hour wind, wind speed with a decorative trellis. Now, I'm sure you will all agree that an eight-foot wall is, I hate to use the word un paredón, but it really is. It's, it's an eight-foot wall, you know? The wall that we're proposing, in our opinion, based on the prescriptive code requirements of the ordinances, it is an eight-foot decorative wall. The only difference being is that it's six foot and then the upper two-foot section would be, you know, an open decorative ornamental type of aluminum type fixture. I have, oh, you have it?
There's a rendering in every packet that the commission could look at of what the gentleman is proposing.
If you can just clarify, because I wasn't, I wasn't here when the project got approved.
Yes.
I was also six years old.
I was, I didn't have as much gray and he was a lot smaller, you know?
What's the, what's, what's, what's the deal with the precast? I'm not, I'm not in the construction industry either, just to clarify.
No, 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 that's fine.
What is it with the precast wall as opposed to building it from, from scratch? Is it not, is it not doable for this, for the narrowness of the wall?
You could, you could build a regular conventional reinforced masonry wall. Okay? But again, because of the height of the wall, okay, you just have to realize, you know, you have a six-foot wall, your foundations are basically resisting the lateral loads on six foot. So the code basically gives you a, I would hate to say a credit, but it gives you a reduced wind speed, okay, which creates a smaller foundation and less reinforcing. The moment you go with an eight-foot wall, that foundation becomes almost three and a half feet wide and two feet deep. Why? Because it's, it has to maintain that overturning of that wall itself.
Yeah. Yeah. I've done some work with the wall of wind. So I'm not in the construction industry.
There you go.
I am in the hurricane industry. The, um, and this wall would be going on the sides of the
Well, the way, yeah, the, we have, our property is, is zone C. It's commercial. Okay? On the north side, it's a commercial property as well. And to the south side, there's a small little restaurant, which they make, it's pretty good for lunch. So, Lo Vinales, yes. Lo Vinales. Those are, those are
The back is a multi, there's a multi-family, right?
The back is a multi-family zoned A apartment.
And, and is the wall going on the back as well or just on the sides?
The, the idea was to have the wall originally, the proposed suggestion from the, the planning board was to have it on all fours, on all three sides. Okay? So there's a ten-foot section on the south side, I'm sorry, on the north side. There's a hundred foot across the back and then approximately about a hundred and, I don't know, I remember probably about a hundred, a hundred and ten feet on the south side, which Lo Vinales actually has a solid wall. So if we put the wall on the property line as suggested, what's going to create is a six-inch sliver between the wall and their partition. And then on the back, it's only going to be three feet. I should say that the backside already has a wood fence on their property. So the buffer is created there. I mean, listen, if we have to build a wall, that's, that's fine. I, I mean, it's not a problem. I'm just trying to find a, an easier solution that would be aesthetically pleasing and, you know.
Is, is on the back, there's an easement between?
There's a ten-foot easement, yes.
There's a, there's a ten-foot easement?
Yeah.
Between the, between the properties?
Twenty-five.
Right. Okay. And then, and you're saying the six, so in the six-inch sliver, and on this amendment here, are you amending just the walls or how many walls?
Well, one thing is to amend the wall height.
Right.
You know, maintaining the eight-foot wall, but the composition of the wall being six foot of precast and then the decorative ornamental, you know, thing, the two foot above.
Right.
Now, if we can further elaborate on where the wall is going to go, you know, I would, I would entertain, you know, to you guys, the idea of not having to install the wall on the north side, the ten-foot section on the north side and the side abutting to Vinales. I have a survey where I can, you could probably visualize it a little better, which is not in the package, but I can have
Yeah. Again, I wasn't here for the original proposal, but
Yeah, you were six, right?
Yeah. But I, you know, it, what's, what's this, this special use is, is tied to something? It's not tied to the amount of walls, correct? Or is it just, it's just tied to the lowering of the height or are we just talking fences generally? What's, uh, what is this application on?
No, the, the application was for the, the original application was for the complete development.
Right. But, but this one that's in front of us here.
It's just for the fence, the height of the fence.
Just the height of the fence?
Yes.
So what you're discussing, what, Mr. Vice, what you're discussing is if we're open to it, you'll come back and talk about the walls, what, how many walls, right?
If you're open to the suggestion.
Okay. So right now, we're just talking about the height?
The height.
Got it. All right.
It's kind of hard to see, but, no, I have a human easel.
Don't worry. We have a, we have a wooden one.
Oh, okay. Great. Thanks, Juan.
Yeah, we'll just pretend we can see that. Just pointed it.
Unfortunately, I'm not holiday night. I don't have, you know, special presentations and stuff. So I have to deal with the, you know, I have my holiday night right here. Mr. Knights, if I should say. And by the way, I, I want to thank you guys for listening to us on such short notice. Mr. Riallo was instrumental, not to mention Juan and, and everyone in the staff. So I'm really very, very appreciative of the fact. The reason is I need to make a decision, or, you know, based on your decision, we have to move because the project has been almost three and a half years in the making. So this is the subject property. On this side here, where the Vinales is at, it's also zoned commercial, same thing here. This is the A use, A use permit or A use zoned. Now, right here between the property line and the fence, existing fence that is on the Vinales, there's a three-foot section. So should I install a wall here as proposed, we're going to have a three-foot slither that it's going to be landlocked. So, you know, for maintenance, for cleaning, for cutting the sod, whatever the case may be, it's restricted. Across the front is a little bit wider. It's six feet. But I hate to say it, but a six-foot sliver, you're going to find homeless people that are going to find their way between that little section. You know, they really don't get back there to cut the sod. So
If, if I may add, something that we need to consider is also safety. In case of a fire, in case of emergency, firefighters, you know, being able to, well, no, I'm, I'm just thinking if, if there's ever a fire and the fire department has to have access to that phase, you know, to that, to that south, they won't have it.
No.
So, you know, we can't, we can't land, like you said, it's landlocked. We can't do that. It's a safety issue. It's a, it's a hazard. It could be, it could be a life threatening.
I mean, before you today is the issue of the proposal of the height. I mean, we can be happy to come back, you know, with, with Mr. Penna and discuss the other
Yeah, I would say this. I, let's, we have a long agenda. Let's, let's deal with the height. I think that we, you should take a look at that. I would just say, just for, you know, just to have something to think about when you're coming back, that you can see a little better.
Mr. Holland right here.
Yeah, the, the
The one you have before you has a
As, as greenery.
An ivy, an ivy type thing. So I, you know, that was the original idea. Listen, we can do the greenery if you'd like.
I think they both look fine.
I, I think that looks better.
The, if I'm, if I'm mistaken, this
Yes.
This is a condo, right? Or is it apartment?
Apartments.
It's apartment? So you're, you're going to be the owner after? Okay.
Well, my, my dad is the owner. Unfortunately, my mom and dad are, are sick and they couldn't attend, but I'm sure they're watching me on the TV, making sure I don't put my foot in my mouth. And then I got a spy over here, which is my brother, you know, so.
I, I only say that because, I only say that because, you know, the only consideration that, I, I understand the point of Vinales, I understand the point with, with the public safety. I think it's all, it all makes sense today. We just got to make sure that we work something out on that front. Because the concern is that tomorrow, Vinales, you know, the building gets knocked down and all of a sudden now you have just no barrier between the two properties. And I don't know if you're the owner or if the building is sold and at that point, we don't have any authority to tell them to go build a wall, you know? So we have, we have to kind of just take that into consideration. I think it's something to get worked out. I think today, I think you're right. I think it does pose kind of an aesthetic stupidity and, and, and some safety issues. So feel free to bring it back. I think on the height, my opinion, I, I don't see an issue. It's very commercial areas. There's no, there's no single family residential. You don't have that privacy concern. So as far as, you know, the residents of your apartment, you know, whoever is going to be a tenant cares about that additional privacy. It doesn't concern me.
And it looks great.
And it looks good. Yeah. It's aesthetic.
I mean, this is physically the picture of the actual fence.
Right.
I mean, from the manufacturer, which is right off of, you know, Coral Way, right behind FPG.
Yeah. So I, I want to make this, I'm going to make this very easy. Does anybody have any concerns about the height? Not, not about the fence, but does anybody have any concerns with the height difference? No, these, the, 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 the six feet plus the two decorative? That, that wall, that wall that he has there? And you need holiday night. I don't know.
Mr. Knight.
I took it from him.
Does anyone have any concerns with the, moving from the eight-foot cast, precast fence to this six-foot plus two decorative? Does anybody have any concern for this?
No, as long, as long as the two feet, the, the top is with a material resistant and is hard, obscured the view and is, is a good, is a good material. It's, it's, it's
You know, if he doesn't want to see it, see through, he wants it with the backing.
Do you want something to restrict the view?
Not that I want.
No, I'm, I understand.
What you present looks nice.
Yes, sir.
If, if you're asking me if we are concerned, the only concern I think
Yes, sir.
is the top to be strong enough that be there for a long time.
Yes, sir.
And it's attached And it's attached strongly, that is sure, that it is going to be one, even is, is added, will, will be one piece, one, one.
Yeah, so it won't fall off.
Of course.
There'll be less, there'll be less wind resistance, because the wind will fall right through.
Right, that's, right.
It's gonna be strong and resistant.
Correct, right, and, and that's one, and that's exactly, and, and I appreciate that, Mr. Suarez, that's precisely the, the reason why we, if it would be eight-foot solid, the wind resistance would be much, much higher, so in having this open space, it, it serves as a chain-link fence, or has the function of a chain-link fence, the wind could basically run through it, it has to be designed to resist, you know, the, whatever wind load requirements we have in the code, but it prevents, you know, that solid sail that would, you know, that would preclude such a height of a fence.
Austin, Stana, will have any issue against this?
Go ahead.
I make a motion.
Go ahead, we have a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, call the roll.
Yes, Commissioner Blanca, how do you vote? Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Patron?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your time. Oh, okay, my wife, obviously, uh, she had asked me on the, and, and this is something I would have to ask, uh, Mr. Pena, the issue on the location, right now, we have the height, so, um, the, the next, you know, I guess, meeting or next, uh, proposal would be the location of where we have it, would that require having to come with a special use application, or would that be through the planning and zoning, uh, you know, recommendation, or how?
Mr. Attorney?
Or, or straight to us.
I'm sorry, sir.
He, he's asking if, if he wanted to come to amend the location of the fences, would he have to do amend the special use permit again, the same way that he did for the height here?
Uh, yes, sir, I would recommend, uh, that procedure, uh, originally, I was talking to the applicant and Mr. Pena, that, uh, you cannot impose things that are not attainable at this point, I think that it would be proper, uh, and the mayor was very right, if, uh, the fence in the back is taken out someday, you need something, uh, there that have been approved by the commission, and they don't have to come back in.
I, I think the, the question was the fence, the one in the back is definitely being resolved.
Yeah, it, it's the same principle for the side.
For the side, yes.
Same, same, same principle.
Same concept.
Um, okay, so, you, that, that's the answer, um, feel free, I think, I think this commission is open to, to working with you on that and.
Thank you.
And finally getting your project done, um, and, uh, hopefully it doesn't cause any problems.
And you guys are welcome to come by and, you know, uh, take a look at it, you know, it's almost ready, it's almost ready.
Let's get in there. Van Dome is out of, out of Paris, or what's the?
Yeah, I mean, there's a Parisian, you know, aesthetic, back, back when we submitted, it was a Parisian, you know, uh, design, so I said, well, if it's a Parisian design, might as well have a Parisian name, so we did Van Dome.
Great.
So.
Alright.
Thank you very much for your time, appreciate it, have a great evening to all.
Thank you.
Happy New Year, sir.
Happy New Year, sir, thank you.
Let's go back to the order of the agenda, um, item six.
Item six, report of city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I have a brief report, it was submitted, uh, in writing this afternoon. First thing on the report is, the American Society of Public Administrators extended an invitation for me to participate in a panel that will engage in the role of a municipal city manager. It's a best practice conference, it's scheduled for February twenty-fourth at Miami Day, uh, College, the North Campus, and so I have confirmed my participation at that best practice conference. The next item is the jitney bus, uh, as approved or, or following commission action, the city went ahead and purchased the bus, which is to be dedicated to the City of West Miami Community Center for our senior citizens, we also signed the purchase order in the amount of, excuse me, six hundred and seventy-three dollars today for the striping of the jitney with a simple city logo, uh, with our name, and an eco-friendly logo as well, Mr. Mayor, I share those.
Yeah, has, has the bus been put into service yet?
Uh, it's, it's being put into service, it has, uh, it got tinted windows, it, it's actually looked like less commercialized now.
Good.
Looks very nice with the tinted windows.
But the seniors haven't actually been able to write in it yet?
Yes, they have.
They have, okay.
They have.
How's that going?
And it's going well.
Good.
They like it, so if you don't hear a complaint, that means they're happy.
Then that's true.
So as soon as the sign is installed, we'll assist the mayor and chairman Suarez of the commission, of, of the community center, with a ribbon-cutting ceremony to make it official for the long-awaited, um, transportation system for the community center participants. And I am doing a survey, Mr. Mayor, on, uh, with other cities to see how many of them have electric buses, so. Uh, the Easter egg hunt, believe it or not, we gotta start planning for this, um, we've set aside a tentative date of April first, April Fool's Day, um, for the Easter, the twenty-twenty-three Easter egg hunt celebration. If this date meets with your, the approval of the commission, we will need to start to coordinate and prepare sponsorship letters, and also, we need approval for, uh, from the commission so that we can order the supplies that we will need to, um, because of the delays in obtaining supplies, goods and services, we'll need to start this sooner rather than later. So if you could look at your calendar, Saturday, April first, um, if you're available, uh, that would be the Saturday before Easter Sunday. And public schools are out, and obviously, being a Saturday, parochial schools have the following we, week off.
Cooper Park, right?
Cooper Park, yes, sir.
Does anyone have any issues, April first, April first, go ahead. You have to go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Um, the after-action report for the lighting of the tree ceremony is attached to my report, you can browse through it at your leisure, uh, at the end of the day, we spent seven thousand dollars out of special events account in the recreation center, we received fifty, five thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars in donations, uh, for a grand total of a twelve thousand one hundred seventeen dollars and twenty-four cents to, um, host the lighting of the tree ceremony. So that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And, next item?
Item seven, report of the city attorney.
There's no report, but I see it, sorry.
Thank you, next item?
Item eight, report of the city engineer.
I have no specific report today, we have a couple items on the agenda that will address at that time.
Perfect. Alrighty.
Item nine, committee report.
Does anybody have any committee reports? Go ahead.
Just to keep it brief, um, 'cause there's a couple things on the agenda as well for that, but we did vote on the design of the tennis courts that we're gonna be resurfacing, we're gonna have two tennis courts to the east, and then two pickleball courts that are actually gonna be, as the mayor mentioned before, where you're gonna be able to play without the sun being in your eyes, 'cause they're gonna be facing north and south, um, and then we also voted on demolishing the racquetball court, so that'll be demolished, that item's on the agenda as well, so I won't get into that, but just to keep it brief, that's it.
Alrighty, thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none, go ahead, next item?
Next item would be item eleven E, presentation by AMI Engineering in reference to Phase Three Portable Water Improvement Project and request for resolution for engineering fees associated with the project by the office of the city manager and city engineer.
Can you read item F while you're at it?
Yes, uh, item F, resolution of the mayor and city commission of the City of West Miami authorizing the office of the city manager to execute the proposal submitted by AMI Engineering for services in connection with Phase Three Portable Water Improvement Project funded by American Rescue Act Project for an amount of one hundred and seventy-one thousand three hundred and forty dollars for professional engineering services for the preparation of construction documents for the project and as described by Exhibit A, providing for an effective date.
Mr. Mayor, this is in connect, this is the engineering services in connection with Phase Three of the DEP funding for an amount of two million dollars, um, the money comes from the grant from the state.
Appropriation, the state.
Appropriation.
Go ahead.
So the Phase Three area, I mean, is, is, is essentially the northwest quadrant of the city, as you all know, we're currently in construction on the second part of, of Phase One, actually Phase Two accord, in DEP's, um, funding order, uh, so that, this will essentially finish up the entire northern half of the city, um, we're currently, as I said, currently in finishing up construction with, uh, Phase One and Two of the DEP-funded area, we're completing design of the, the central area that we called Phase Two, um, but it's the ARPA-funded area, which you'll see in your, in your materials there, uh, so that area is currently under design, we're hoping to go out, uh, to bid on that, uh, within the next couple months, uh, and get, get in, get going in construction there, hopefully as, as we finish work over on Phase Two. Um, so the Phase Three work, as you can see there, will extend, uh, pick up where we left off, uh, with the ARPA-funded area, and then complete the entire northwest, uh, portion there. So, i- it's, it's interesting to see how the phases are all divided, it's, it's been kind of a challenge, as we've gotten pots of money from different places to piece it all together as a puzzle, but, uh, I think it's gonna work out, and, uh, we're gonna, you know, we're gonna basically, uh, finish up, uh, you know, sixty, seventy percent of the city with these projects, really what's left is, is just, uh, the southwest quadrant, south of Sixteenth.
So, um, not, not to get off topic on, it's part of water related, it's not related to this civic, uh, this allocation, I know we were having meetings, um, on a, on a three million dollar federal appropriation.
Correct.
Um, and I know that they were discussing a waiver on the, on the match.
Correct.
Is that, was there any more conversations on that front?
There are no guarantees, but it, uh, from our conversations with the rep from, um, the, uh, Washington.
EPA.
Part of money, the EPA, it looks like we will meet the, uh, waiver requirements.
Beautiful, yeah. Alright, thank you.
Alright.
Does anyone have any questions, concerns, comments? Item D and F.
I just want to congratulate, uh, the engineers and the, and the company they hired to finish that, uh, area here in the, in the east, they're doing very well, they only need to just cover the, the, the last, um, the last.
Yeah, they just did the asphalt.
Yeah, the asphalt, that's it, the last step.
Yeah, but on the, on the avenue of the asphalt, that's gonna be replaced, right?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
It's not the final lift.
Okay.
Yeah, they, they're gonna redo it.
Okay, just making sure, 'cause I bump through there every day.
I second what he said, I, I see that every day, and you know what?
They, they.
It's great.
Yeah, if you drive on Fifty-Eighth or Sylvania, that was mil-, that was resurfaced by them last year, that's how it'll come out, it'll, it'll be brand new.
Yeah, I see it every day, and, and it's, it's wonderful, um, I mean.
But this is going to be finished soon.
It's gonna be finished.
It's already, it's almost already, it's set for the asphalt.
Yep.
Okay, so if anyone has any question, does that, if nobody has any questions, uh, you have a motion?
Motion, second.
You have a motion by Commissioner Suarez, second by Vice Mayor Blanes, call the roll?
Yes, uh, Commissioner, uh, Chavez, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Patron?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item?
Next item is item eleven G, report by the office of, of the city manager in reference to FERDAP grant, uh, expiring April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three, and requesting permission from the mayor and city commission to repurpose and restructure the projects as described by the scope of services in FERDAP grant A ten eighteen by the office of the city manager.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the city commission, on January thirteenth, twenty-twenty-three, I issued a written memorandum as a, a follow-up to the Recreation Advisory Board meeting, uh, that meeting was chaired by Commissioner Ivan Chavez, we met at the City of West Miami Recreation Center inside the multipurpose facility, among the other items that we talked about, we reported on the status of the FERDAP grant, which, if you go by the grant, uh, document, it states clearly that the date of the expiration is June thirtieth, um, we were ver-, we were looking forward to the restroom facility becoming a part of the, the FERDAP allocation, we, since we called, um, I got on the phone with Robert Ruano, the grant writer, and we called DEP, and it was brought to our attention that, um, the work plan itself will mandate the city to finish, to complete the projects as stipulated by the grant by April thirtieth, not June thirtieth, and that that, um, we could not ask for extensions, if we could not meet that deadline, we would have to basically give up the money, and they would, it goes back into their fund. So we sat down and spoke about, and I think I spoke to Commissioner Chavez, I spoke to the mayor, um, I spoke to Commissioner Blanca, I believe, Mr. Penn and I met several times, and we feel that if we repurpose or restructure the grant to allow the bathrooms to be funded by impact fee, which is how we're gonna fund the wellness center, we believe if we purpose these projects, and then the, the quicker projects, we allow that to be covered by the allocation coming from the DEP grant, I think we'll be able to meet the April thirtieth deadline.
So, so let's, for, for clarity's sake, I know we discussed this, but for clarity's sake, projects falling under the impact fees?
Are going to be the wellness.
Projects falling under the grant, so.
Exactly, wellness center and restroom facilities.
So wellness center and the restroom facilities, it's tied to the wellness center, correct?
Tied to that, it's part of that building.
Which we will ground on today, right?
Correct.
So that's gonna be from the impact fees.
Correct.
Now, the grant, the FERDAP grant?
The grant is going to.
Is gonna cover what?
It's gonna cover the playground system, it's gonna cover the tennis courts and pickleball courts, and the lighting for the baseball field, and if we have money left over, the barbecue pit.
Right.
Which I believe that the main three projects will use up the full four hundred thousand dollars.
Most likely.
The two hundred thousand that we're matching, and I propose that we match that from reserves in the recreation center, and then the two hundred thousand coming from the grant from the state.
Right, so we'll get, we'll get the pickleball courts, which I know were very, really in demand, um, by the residents, the lights, which are also very much in demand by the residents, I get emails on that all the time.
Right.
Um, I think that park is used five days, five, five nights a week, um, that part of the park, and then we have the tennis court resurfacing, and then we'll get the wellness center, which we're, we're working on to see if we can keep it for West Miami, uh, residents.
Correct, um, today, this afternoon, uh, using the DemandStar, um, tool that we have for publishing bids, Mr. Pena uploaded the information for, in anticipation of this meeting, for the tennis courts and pickleball, and he uploaded as well the RF, the RFP for the lights at the baseball field, am I correct, so far, Mr. Pena? We have secured one vendor for playground equipment that has one equipment, which is what we're looking for, at a price of eighty-six thousand dollars, and they have it ready, if you approve the, um, the restructuring of the bid, we can move forward with that purchase. It may require the commission to have a special meeting to vote on the expense, because it is over my, my threshold that I'm allowed.
And we can't get more, we can't get more vendors on to?
They cannot guarantee that the playground equipment will be in, that all the parts will be in, and we have to show DEP, showing them.
Completed projects?
Pictures that we have, and videos that we have completed projects.
Okay, we'll, we'll deal with that, uh, in, in regards to the allocation of the funding, which is, you know, the repurposing of the grant, uh, that's what we're dealing with here, correct?
Correct.
So, does anyone have any questions, concerns, comments on the repurposing, the moving around of the money to complete the projects? Any, any questions, concerns, comments? Uh, I know you guys, well, I know, uh, you guys led a lot of these efforts on the recreation, let's say, I'm excited about what's going on at the recreation center, I think there's a lot of movement there, it's been kind of stagnant for a lot of years, and now we're gonna get a really nice gym, you know, new courts, um, lighting, you know, people actually be able to use, use it to, to the level of service and, um, that they, they pay for as residents, go ahead.
Just to, to point it out as well, 'cause this is a photo of the rendering of what that could potentially look like, we discussed it in the parking rec advisory board of putting fencing so to separate, isolate the pickleball courts from the tennis courts, uh, we haven't We haven't decided on the color yet, but this is just a bunch of different colors and if you wanna pass it down to see what that could look like.
Maybe you guys wanna see it. I trust the residents on the Recreation Advisory Board, all that stuff. I don't trust my eye. So, does anybody have any questions, concerns, comments, or a motion?
No, I just want to comment that I hope, Mr. Penn, I just do this as fast as you can, because I, Commissioner Vice Mayor Blanes and me, we have planning to play tennis soon by challenging to a match, so.
I don't wanna bet on that one. I don't wanna bet on that match.
Please, go fast.
I don't know who I would choose. Oh, let's get a motion.
We have to read the resolution, Mr. Mayor.
I thought you read it. Okay, go ahead.
I didn't. Item eight, resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of City of West Miami, repurposing the FERDAP grant under Project Eight Ten Eighteen for a total amount of four hundred thousand dollars, two hundred thousand for grant proceeds, and two hundred thousand for Recreation Center reserves for the following projects. The replacement of baseball field lights, resurfaced scene of tennis courts and pickleball courts. Replacement of playground systems at the Recreation Center, and installation of barbecue pit adjacent to the park pavilion, providing for expiration date of April twentieth, twenty twenty-three for the completion of the above-mentioned project, providing for effective date. So we had a motion by Commissioner Blanca.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Chavez. And Commissioner Suarez, add your vote.
Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Suarez.
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez.
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca. Vice Mayor Blanes.
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Patron.
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Thank you all.
And next item is item eleven I. Resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami waiving the requirements or sealed bids as required by Section two seventy-four of the City Code, declaring an emergency due to the time constraints of FERDAP Grant Eight Ten Eighteen to be voted by a four-fifth vote of the Mayor and City Commission, authorizing the Office of the City Manager and/or his designee to execute contract with W.L. Trucking and Engineering, Inc. for the demolition or removal of the existing racquetball court structure at the West Miami Recreation Center to be performed as required by the grant, providing for effective date.
Who wants to speak on this?
Again, Mr. Mayor, this was the unanimous recommendation of the Recreation Advisory Board to the Mayor and City Commission is that the city demolish the racquetball court. There's going to be very, a very small alley, if you would, created by the existing racquetball court and the building.
Yeah, I wouldn't call it an alley.
The new building.
It's like a foot. Yeah, so there's currently a tennis wall there, which is fantastic, but obviously you can't play, you can't hit the wall anymore because there's a foot between the buildings. So is there anything to talk about here, really, or is this is really part of the project?
Right. You're gonna have a much nicer view, if you would, from the residential side on Sixty-third Avenue, looking towards the new Wellness Center or weight room or gym facility.
Right. How much does it cost to surface a pickleball court, which is about a fourth the size of a tennis court today? I mean...
To what?
How much does it cost to surface a tennis court or a pickleball court today? And like, with these numbers, I'm sure we have some estimates. How much does it cost to resurface a tennis court or a pickleball court?
To resurface?
Or to surface, to surface a new.
To build new, fifty thousand dollars.
Fifty thousand. And then what was the estimate on redoing the racquetball court?
The racquetball court was like a hundred and something thousand dollars.
Yeah, so it just makes sense. Go ahead.
Just for additional information, we went out and we asked the existing contractor that we have on, on the contract, and we also went to other contractors that we've dealt with in the past. The cheapest is W.L. Trucking at seventeen thousand to demolish and remove the structure.
Sounds about right. What's, any, any questions, concerns, comments?
No, I mean, just to add, we're building, or we're resurfacing the tennis courts, adding pickleball. So by removing the racquetball court, that's actually gonna be advertised now from the street. You're gonna be able to see the beautiful new facilities that we have. We're gonna have more green space, so all positives.
I agree. It's gonna look more spacious, you know, look more, uh...
Okay, so.
More congruity.
Does anybody have a motion?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, you should specifically state that you waive the competitive bidding.
Well, yes, I mean, it's in the resolution, but it would be required a four-fifth vote to waive competitive bidding on this item. And with that, can we have a motion?
Motion, second.
Motion and a second. Call the rule.
Yes, Commissioner Chavez, add your vote.
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca. Vice, Commissioner Suarez.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes.
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Patron.
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Thank you. Next item.
And next item, item eleven J. A resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami, Florida, waiving the procurement requirement process as established by the Section two seventy-four of the Code of Ordinance of the City of, of the City, as recommended by the City Manager. Declaring an emergency due to time constraint, retaining strategy consultants to lobby the United States Congress to pursue funds for several city projects, including potable water needs, authorizing the City Manager to execute the appropriate documents to effectuate said retainer. Further, authorizing the City Manager to allocate the amount of twelve thousand dollars for this contract, providing for an effective date.
So this is something that me and the manager have been speaking about as of recent. As you're all aware, the first year of earmarks being back in Congress was last year, and we did very well. We got about three million dollars, well, not about, we got three million dollars in appropriations from the federal government for the potable water system. That appropriation was about six times as much as any other city in Commerce and Sales District, which includes Coral Gables, includes City of Miami and others. There's been a lot of changes in, and I'll say on that one, I was the primary lead on that. I don't think anyone else, because of manager, when we're filling the application, I hadn't any other contact with the Commerce and Sales Office. There was, things have changed in that area, which has led me, in conversation with the manager, to believe that we just need a little bit more representation to take advantage of the earmark. I think there's a lot of money coming down for a lot of projects, and I wanna make sure that we are at the ready to, to put the bucket under, under the water. So I think the number the manager came up with is the lowest possible number we can obtain consultants for, just to set up and represent us on the earmark. That's basically what we're doing. We're not gonna go on issue-based items just on earmark appropriations to try to replicate another three million dollars and finish out our potable water project, really. You know, if we get a million dollars out of it, great. If we get three million dollars and finish the project, even better. The issue is, there's only, we don't know how many more years the earmarks are gonna last. Earmarks were not here for fifteen years. They came back last year, and now they're, they're back for a limited time. So we know that they're back this year, because they just had a committee. But because of that, the appropriations are starting to roll in. We don't have a request in yet. We're gonna need a little bit of help. So with that, any questions, concerns, or comments?
I, I agree that this is... I agree that this is an obvious choice to, to go forward with this. We got three million dollars as a small city last year. They are, it's been very beneficial to us. So for a twelve thousand dollar price tag, we could potentially get some more funds that can assist us in a similar fashion, so.
I make a motion.
Yeah, the, the...
Second.
I was gonna say, the risk-to-reward ratio is, you know, very good, so.
So we have a motion, and we have a second. Please call the rule.
Yes, Commissioner Chavez, add your vote.
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez.
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca. Vice Mayor Blanes.
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Patron.
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Thank you.
And I want to make, make a comment, Mayor, and... I just want to make a comment, that there is a, there are a lot of people lobbying for money in Washington and Tallahassee, and we have to do in that, in that, in that position too. Because if not, we don't get any, a penny.
We've never had a Washington appropriation.
We had to do some things and lobbying with this.
In almost forty years that I've been here.
And it wasn't, it wasn't easy last year, but it's gonna be harder this year. Not that there's, there's, it's funny, it's not that there's less money going out this year. It's just that people are more aware that the money is there, so the competition is higher again. So anyways, next item.
Item eleven K. A resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami by adopting and joining that said resolution adopted by the City of Doral, strongly opposing the proposed Criminal Court Administrative Order relating to bail and bond reform, to the extent that the order would result granting many criminal offenders a release on their own recognizance without attending a first appearance hearing before a judge and without any monetary bond being posted, including offenders arrested for a wide range of crimes in the City of West Miami, such as city and county ordinance offenses, first and second degree misdemeanor offenses, and certain felony offenses, and further directing the city clerk to transmit a copy of the resolution to all minority publicis in Miami-Dade County, the Fraternal Order of Police, the Police Benemal Association, and the Miami-Dade County League of Cities, and urging all such entities to join the city's opposing opposition to this measure and providing for an effective date. This item is sponsored by Commissioner Chavez.
So Commissioner, I saw Miami Beach opposed this. I saw Doral also got on board. I'm assuming other cities. The floor is yours.
I make a motion.
Wait, hold on, just one second. Go ahead.
So, so yeah, and sticking with, I think the theme that this commission, this city's been putting forward for a long time, that public safety is at the forefront of a lot of our decision-making, with, you know, crosswalks, with an item that's on the agenda coming up as well, that the mayor's brought forward. This goes hand in hand with that. Our police officers are out there on a daily basis, putting themselves in harm's way, apprehending these subjects. And to think that we're just gonna release them out onto the streets where they can go and continue to potentially harm the city and its, and/or its residents, I think this is something that we should definitely get behind and go along with, as the mayor stated, cities of Doral, cities of Miami Beach, and many others that are opposing this reform.
Did we have a motion over there? Oh, go ahead.
I'd like to say something very briefly.
Absolutely, go ahead.
I don't know, I don't know what kind of, you know, philosophies are being adopted here, but, you know, I believe in equality, but they've taken equality and transformed it into equity. You know, trying to make everybody equal. Well, not everybody is the same. You know, you have bad people and you have good people. Criminals will always commit crimes. It's their nature, and, you know, some of them cannot be changed. So I just don't understand, you know, the philosophy of, of, of passing these laws, where, you know, criminals commit a crime and there's no cause and effect, there's no accounting for their actions. You know, that only encourages them to go back out and commit more crimes, because they, there's no cause and there's no effect. And basically, you know, they're, they're almost being pampered and rewarded, and that's what destroys societies. And that's why, you know, throughout this country, in other cities, you know, you have, you know, increased amount of crimes, murder, burglaries, robberies, you know, it's, I mean, it's incomprehensible. So, thank you for bringing this up, Commissioner Chavez.
Thank you. Yeah, we had a motion over there. Commissioner Blanca, you have a second? Do we have a second?
Second.
You have a second by Vice Mayor Blanes? Go ahead. Call the rule.
Yes, Commissioner Suarez, add your vote.
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez.
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes.
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Patron.
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Next item.
Next item, item eleven L. Presentation by AMI Engineering in reference to results of traffic study conducted by Caltrans Engineering Group, Inc.
Alright, good evening once again. So as, as you all are aware, we did commission our, our traffic consultants, Caltrans Engineering Group, to perform this study. The study was essentially to determine whether or not we can lower our speed limit throughout the city from thirty mile an hour, which is the typical residential speed limit, to twenty-five mile an hour. The way Caltrans approached the study is they followed essentially the Florida statutes, which, which allows for reduction in speeds under thirty miles an hour if an evaluation determines that that limit reduction is reasonable. DOT, FDOT, as a response to that statute, developed a set of guidelines in order to determine what is reasonable. And in our case, the determination of reasonableness is essentially to determine first what the eighty-fifth percentile speed is within the city, and then we can be within plus or minus three miles, three mile an hour of that eighty-fifth percentile speed. Caltrans used the data that we had collected back in twenty nineteen when we did a citywide traffic study. That was quite a comprehensive study. We did not only traffic counts, but velocity monitoring throughout the entire city. And they used that speed to, they used those data sets to determine the eighty-fifth percentile speed, which they determined to be approximately, what was the number?
Twenty-eight point three.
Twenty-eight point three? No, twenty-seven point six. So they determined the citywide average actually to be twenty-seven point six, and there's an interesting table that has the eighty-fifth percentile speed for different, different streets throughout the cities, ranging from, you know, thirty-seven mile an hour over on Twenty-second Street, all the way down to twenty-three mile an hour in some, in some areas. So the, they took that eighty-fifth percentile speed, determined that twenty-five mile an hour is within a three mile an hour range, and it's reasonable, and per Florida statute, we can do it. So, you know, per this report, they then also prepared a map of the city as to where, per DOT, we should have the speed limit signs, which we've, we actually did that study before. But we're in a position now that, that we can go forward and...
So what's the, what's the process now? I know Commissioner Cabrera's been asking, what's, what's the process now in terms of the county?
So we've already, we've already authorized Caltrans to submit to the county, so it's been submitted.
Okay.
That was done, I believe, last week. So, you know, it's gonna be a process to get it approved.
If I'm not mistaken, I believe Commissioner Higgins, because her district had so many areas in the City of Miami that were communities and neighborhoods, that I think she, she mentioned to me, and she, it's funny, because they, they pass so many things in the county, they forget what they passed. She mentioned to me that, that she was, she had the belief that she was able to pass something there that simplified the process. That if you had the data set and you submitted it, that it would become a much more simple process.
Yeah.
You might not even need to go to the commission.
Yeah, and we actually preemptively, Caltrans did talk to the county even before initiating the study to determine if we could use the data that we already had. So, you know, just based on the study, based on the fact, we're, we're basically hanging our hat on Florida statute. I don't foresee an issue. However, you never know.
So right now, it's in the county.
Right now, it's in the county, so we'll see what they come back with. We don't, again, we don't foresee an issue, because we're, we're following Florida statute and FDOT guidelines, and we, we fall within, you know, we fall within that. And again, we did preemptively ask them if we could use the data from twenty nineteen, so there, there should not be an issue with them thinking that that data is outdated at all.
Beautiful. Thank you. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for the engineer on that? This is basically in the county. We're just kinda waiting for them now, to see what they say.
Yeah, so we'll report back as soon as we hear.
Thank you. Alright, next item. We're almost done, guys.
Item eleven M. Discussion on Final Location of Pine Rockland Showcase Garden at Cooper Park in partnership with Fairchild Tropical Botanic Gardens Connect to Protect Program by Mayor Diaz-Patron.
So, a couple of months ago, we brought the idea of the butterfly garden, of the native, the native Pine Rockland Showcase Garden at Cooper Park. There was two locations that we considered, both of them outside of the recreational space. So, as you know, on the, the side of the, of the Cooper that is closest to Somerset, I don't like to get this east-west stuff. The side that's closest to Somerset, there's these two pockets. There's a mound on, on the Fifteenth Street side, and then there's just a flat area on the Sixteenth Street side. This is on the other side of the walkway, so when you're walking, there's a recreational space where people play, and then there's this kind of dead space, which is grass on, on the other side of the walkway. So one of those two locations is where we project to have Fairchild come in and, and in conjunction with them, put this Pine Rockland Garden with a bench, edging, educational, educational stuff, a little pine tree, full showcase garden. That's also where the Little Free Library will be housed, and create this passive, you know, nature zone in one of the areas. This was brought back a couple of months ago. We've been working with Fairchild this whole time, trying to get to this point. Essentially, what it, what it, what would happen is we would, because we have the vehicle already, we would scrape the, the sand, a couple, a couple inches, not the sand, the, the, the soil, a couple inches, because they need to take out the non-native soil. And then they'll come in and they'll actually provide us with native plants as part of their Connect to Protect program, and walk us through the planting. We'll make it a community event. People can come help us plant. I have organizations that are willing to send people to help, and we actually planted ourselves with their guidance. And it would be the first step of bringing back native species onto the Pine Rockland ecology, so ecosystem. So, the question here today is, we already, we already kind of green-lighted the idea of putting it at Cooper in this non-recreation zone. The question is, in which area? If I'm not mistaken, Madam Manager, I know that Fairchild went back and they sent us an email. Did you get that one as well?
I got that one, to be honest with you. I haven't had a chance to look at it, but I did get it.
My understanding from the email was that they were fine with either side. They went, they visited the site, and they were fine with the other side. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Why don't you bring to the table some kind of the drawing?
Yeah.
Of the two options, so we can see which will be the.
Yeah, we're, we're working on a little bit of a.
Bring the two options, you know.
Working a little bit of a time crunch, so I have it here.
I, I understand what, what you, the occasion you're talking about, but if you bring something in black and white, will be more easy for us, you know, to, I, I think, you know, you see and then you, you decide.
With this area?
No, no, I know, I understand, I see that, and I have it in my mind, but if, if that people, if that people or we make a drawing.
Yeah.
You know, will be.
So, so, so here's, here's the thing, we're not, we're not taking any vote on this tonight, we just, we, we want to, we want to set up, because we, we do want to prepare with them and have them be able to design, design the garden, because we don't have the design yet, because they haven't designed it, because we haven't told them the location. So we're not, we're not, we're not taking a vote, a real, we're not taking a gavel vote today, not a final vote today, but we would like to get an idea of, out of those two areas that you know and we all know very well, which one is it, which, which, which area are we most inclined to go with? Is it the one with the mound on the fifteenth street side, where the mound is, where the?
The trees, where the trees are.
Where the trees are, so the other side?
The, the, the trees give the shade, you know, the trees are very.
Tree side or on the sixteenth side? Go ahead.
I tend to lean towards the fifteenth street side for a few reasons. You have the sitting area under the trees where families are already hanging out, and then fifteenth street's also more calm, so if we want kids to kind of be, you know, involved with that process and, and, you know, admiring the plants and the nature and the little library, you want them to be, I guess, closer to a street that's not as busy.
If I'm not mistaken, administration a couple months back had that same thought, right, on the fifteenth street side, it was a calmer side.
Correct.
Okay.
Much calmer.
So we'll, we'll, you know, we'll, we'll tentatively go with that, and then if something becomes an issue, we'll bring it back, but we'll tentatively plan around that, we'll let them design around that, and bring that back to the commission to see.
Very good.
All right.
I like with the Ivan idea, with the, the benches out and the trees, you know, more.
Beautiful.
I second that.
Beautiful. Okay, we don't need a vote on that, we'll just, we'll, we'll note that, and we'll, we'll continue discussions with Fairchild. All right, next item.
I think we've covered the agenda, item twelve, consent agenda items, we have one item for the consent agenda.
Yeah, this is, yeah, I mean, I don't think anyone has any questions on this, well, it's supposed to be a surprise, so we'll work on it when, as it becomes closer. So, does anyone have a motion for the consent, for the consent agenda items?
Motion.
Motion, do we have a second? All in favor, say aye.[1777.02]